I just turned off the video. Um. Unmute, start video. Mayor Budge. Mayor Budge, we're live.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending and I'm going to call this meeting in order. This will be a regular setting of the mayor and council city of Vidney County, Department of State of Arizona. Being held on Tuesday night, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. At seven oh two P M. of our council chief. Uh, we'll call.
Do I have a microphone? Are good, okay. Council member one, Eda Hill. Council member Joni Giacamino. Council member Frank Davis. Mayor Ken Budge. Council member Leslie Johns. Council member Mel Soweed. Excused. I'm a council member Anna Klein, mayor pro tem. City staff. Stephen Pocken, city manager, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director. Matthew Gurney, public works director. Jay Ritchie, deputy police chief, Jim Richardson, fire chief, city attorney Joe Estes.
Thank you, everyone. For a moment's silence tonight, um, before we say the kind of reasons, I'll just uh ask everyone to rise and. At the moment, uh, let's think about what's going on in Middle East and uh. And have a reflection on whatever um you might tonight and anyone saying what we just just want to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I don't have any problemations tonight. I would uh. Like to make a short announcement. There was. Something still taken from Saint Matt's Church yesterday. And as mayor, I really think we're in a better community than that to take. Major cross line off of the. The diason, the top top of the church and I. I'm really upset about that and I and I know. That there are a lot of people out there, but I'm going to ask everybody in our city that. You know, any that happens, but this is the way that we will bail and if you do anything or hear anything about this. Please let us know, let the police know, let me know and I'll pass it on. Um, without passing on any names, but. This is something that that we ought to be able to get back and 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 put to rest, so. Please uh consider that as uh as a plea from your mayor that this is something that we as a community don't need already. And for my churches now. Thank you, um. So I have uh next, it will be the call of the public, I have one. Signed up.
Cured bid ringing in contract with procurement and sent forth in Arizona revised statute. And this is city code. All right. I need water. All right, so. Can I go over ten minutes? Uh, no, that's fine. When people wants to, to, to send something in, I think it's appropriate that we read the, or we can.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to address some of the comments.
Sure.
And just point out that the, the litigation did not find that the contract was invalid. It was a valid enforceable contract. The litigation found that there was an ambiguity as to who a, uh, who's a proper party to be able to file a bid protest who is an interested party. Uh, you will find that I, I'm unaware of any municipality or government entity that allows for general public or any individual to file a formal bid protest on a procurement. It's always the interested parties are those parties who are involved in that procurement who have a, an interest in that procurement. So if you've got ten bidders on any procurement, you've got ten interested parties. As opposed to millions of interested parties of just general taxpayer residents. Now, let's not say that we do not stifle free speech as the mayor's pointed out. He read, uh, statements that were contrary to positions and now the public is more than welcome to speak to contract items, to procurements, to any agenda item that comes before the council. This is just again, a very limited circumstance where we provide a mechanism to allow for an interested party in a procurement to file a protest if they feel that something wasn't done according to standards in that procurement. So they can address those issues directly to the council.
Thank you, um. Cindy, turning up. I just want to throw out a quick, a quick example, which was the contract that was going to be awarded out of Camp Nakco, uh, we heard from the public. Uh, we as a council decided that, uh, we would like it reviewed and naturally they've gone back out to do better than again. So, uh, anybody, not only every ordinance like this has not one chance but twice to come up for us. Um, and we're more than happy to have anybody show up and tell us. And just as an example, that's, uh, that's the transparency that we use in order to do these. So. Uh, who the comments from council? All in a mission. The lawman.
Give me great. I'll read it this time. I move to approve order zero dash twenty-three dash fourteen. Commending the code of the city of Bisbee, article three point five point two zero. Bid protest subsection three point five two zero A. Filling out a protest by defining an interested party is subsection three point five point two zero A. One, providing for the repeal and several bills.
Second. We have a motion second to approve ordinance O dash twenty-three dash fourteen. Always in favor, signify by, oh, it's about, sorry, I have to.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Council member Hill.
Hi.
Council member Giacominio.
Hi.
Council member Davis.
Hi.
Council member Johns.
Hi.
Councilman, oh, uh, council member Klein, mayor Protem.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes you down this league. So. All right, moving on to new business now. This will be item five. This is a special and possible approval of resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirteen. This is a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee approving a transfer of budget funds from the city of Bisbee visible year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Our finance director is badly, well, it's all been put out in front of us, uh, but it's simple X Y H of all you do.
Uh, mayor, council, this is a fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget adjustments we are required to record as part of our year-end closing entries. These adjustments are not moving funds around. It is just changing what we estimated we would spend to cover actual expenditures for any departments or funds that went over the original budget estimate. Um, not all costs can be anticipated, can be anticipated at a time, um, that we make the budget, but this does allow us, does not allow us to spend more than what we budgeted. Um, but they'll let us make budget adjustments to make up that difference. So, um, there were seven departments within the general fund and four funds outside the general fund that um, spent more than anticipated due to various reasons. Um, covered in the attached briefs work, but I think that's that.
Questions? We, I just got across this. You may all come out at soon. Uh, after we, when all is said and done, we did spend more, we had to take that money in the bank. So let's, let's all thank that portion of it. Any further, I'll add in a motion for, um, five.
I move to approve resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirteen. Approving transfer of funding out to the city of Bisbee of fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty-three budget.
I have a motion and second to approve resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirteen. Uh, approving the transfers in budget funds in our, the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh, I impose nay. During that, the ayes have it, so move. Moving on, I'm six. This is discussion of possible approval of the acceptance of a safety enhanced enhancement assistance program awarded to the Bisbee police department, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the one hundred club of Arizona for the purchase of ten ballistic shields and, uh, deputy chief Richie.
Deacon mayor council, thank you for having me. Coming for you today and seeking the approval for the fifteen thousand dollar stipend from the one hundred club safety enhancement stipend program. Shields be provided by Nevada tactical. Uh, the shields is designed for protection, safety of officers who are engaged in high-risk situations that we face on a normal basis or regular basis, which could be as you know, active shooters, warrants, certain warrants, those things that would engage with my officers. Uh, with firearms, involving firearms is safer. Uh, they're designed to provide additional layer of protection. They would be issued as part to each officer as part of their patrol kit. The chief, it's an extra homework in regards to this purchase and looking at this most shields cost, we were from five to eight thousand dollars. He was able to get with the homework, ten of them for fifteen thousand dollars for the one hundred club. Shields would need to be purchased by December first of twenty twenty-three and be in hand by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
All right, question. Okay, go ahead.
Deputy chief, have we ever had these shields before?
We've never, we've looked into getting them, but we never had the ability to actually get those type of things. You know, we borrowed shields from other instances when we deal with certain events that we've gone through such a search once and stuff like, we've never actually had any of our own. So it just gives us the ability to actually capitalize. You know, we deal with today's society, things are going on in the world today, active shooters. My staff have to respond to the first ones to an active shooter situation. I mean, the additional protection that can be provided. Deal with those types of things, very important.
Thank you. I'm glad to see us really stepping up our. Thank you.
I'm ready to be seven. All right, any other, any other questions or thoughts? Say none. Uh, motion.
I move to approve the acceptance of the safety enhancement stipend, S E S. Assistance program awarded to the Bisbee department in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the one hundred of Arizona for the purchase of ten ballistic shields.
I'll second that. I have a motion and second for the acceptance of a safety enhancement. Uh, assistance program for the police department, fifty thousand dollars. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. During that, the ayes have it, so move. Thanks. All right, moving on, I'm seven. We have the boys standing up already here. Let's excuse me, it's got a possible approval of the purchase of a Paner ten horsepower commercial pump, a twenty-two, uh, whatever, after right babbler from the Paners. Improved dealer vendor mountain pools. Go ahead, uh, city public works director.
Thank you, mayor council. And we are moving forward with.
Yeah.
Uh, so this is to, uh, purchase the, uh, the needed, uh, Panter ten horsepower pump uh, for our Bisbee pool. Um, the third mountain pool company is the, uh, recommended dealer for this area. Um, and, or they're the only one for, because you can't make it all. Uh, and then this also includes of the twenty-two of the babblers, which what we've referenced them in the past is the inlet return covers. So they're dome shaped, so nobody catches their feet or anything like that. They're very safe. Uh, so we can have a proper flow in seventeen. Uh, we only seventeen, I've got four twenty-two, so we have extra anything happens in the road, we have, uh, extra. So that's why the twenty-two and not seventeen. Um, this was the appropriate pump recommended from. That now is six thousand and fifty-two dollars.
Questions? Anybody wants to say anything? Right, yeah, this is the last piece of physicalness that we're gonna need for the pool. There'll be a couple other small things that we're gonna handle, but um, by getting this on order and getting it in, we'll have it, have it in place when we need it.
Um, and then there was one thing, uh, that I've been worried about is timeline for this pump. That's one of the one things I've been trying to get this moving, uh, but timeline is, uh, seven to ten business days. So.
Uh, I don't know if UPS even works. All right, it's time for Christmas. Um, I mean, to have it here and, and in stock, that's the main thing, so that we can all put together. All right, um. I'll move to approve the purchase of the Paner ten horsepower commercial pump and twenty-two babblers because of this swimming pool. Uh, motion and second to approve item seven, uh, for the commercial pump for the swimming pool. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. During that, the ayes have it, so move. You watch your mouth. Or you will soon. All right, moving on, we're gonna do item eight. This is discussion of possible approval for purchase a mobile column lift. This is seventy-six thousand dollar, seventy-six thousand pound, pound to the, um, contract. And I don't know why you explain what it's doing.
So this is a mobile column lift for a full four post lift. So these are four separate lifts, uh, for that goes under each tire of a vehicle. So, uh, for our garbage trucks, the city bus, any large. Um, at this point, we can't, we have no way of lifting these vehicles. At times we kind of send things up to, uh, service because you can't lift them if you, uh, for certain uh, tasks that the mechanics need to accomplish. Uh, this, uh, we were awarded, um.
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand, uh, from a brand from ADI brands with a three, thirty-six hundred dollar local match. Um, and we also budgeted in under sanitation seventeen thousand dollars uh, in the budget for this year to go towards this. Um, because this, this will, um, assist, help and assist for the, the, the garbage trucks as well.
All right, so order for us to better service our vehicles and not have to sign them away.
That's. Comments? Yeah, where's the, what's the local bunch?
Oh, that's, that's what the city pays out of the, the bus fund. Yes.
Yes. Questions, comments?
Uh, demo motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a mobile column lift seventy-six thousand pound capacity under source law contract. Eight zero one, three zero two zero M R L.
I'll secondly.
Is there a reason?
Yeah.
Oh, I can't see on the phone. You're getting older. All right, I'll read that again. I move to approve the purchase of a mobile column with seventy-six thousand pound capacity under source law contract number zero one, three zero, two zero, M R L.
We have a motion and second to approve the purchase of a mobile column lift for to live our, live our heavier, um, trucks and, and vehicles in the city. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. During that, the ayes have it, so move. All right, um, one last one for public works is discussion possible approval of the purchase of buyer's products, tailgate spreader for the public works street department. Man.
Thank you again. Uh, or we've had, uh, streets department has had a salt spreader for many years. I don't know how old it is, it's very old. Uh, and recently in the last couple of years, we've been having the band-aid. The actual, uh, structure itself with the salt, uh, and the sand is very abrasive to steel. That's what it is currently. Uh, we're asking to purchase a, this new, uh, salt spreader. And it's stainless steel, so we'll not, we don't have the problem with rust. Uh, and last year we, uh, did not have this. We ordered smaller, uh, spreaders, uh, to get by through, through the winter. Uh, well, this is something that we definitely need, uh, while we have those good, uh, snow blocks that we get for all this thing. So this is, uh, seven thousand to go, uh, well, almost eight thousand going behind our, in the back of our duck truck. Uh, that goes through all the, any other places that we.
Yeah, hopefully, maybe global warming. All right. All right. No, it is something obviously with the, with the streets that we have here that we don't have clouds, but we can at least get some sand and salt on them. Um, comments? Maybe some good, good one there. Oh, yeah.
If I remember correctly, uh, the spreader that we're using today was purchased in either the first or second year here, which would make, make it two thousand six or two thousand seven. But that's a lot of abrasion on steel.
Yeah.
Two years or so.
And it's, uh, we've been band-aiding it the last few years, uh, this last winter it finally went. Where it, it was falling apart. We've already replaced the motor line at once. Uh, so it's, it's had a fuse.
You know, I get used to it three times a year, everyone does. The other comments, questions? Uh, in a motion and.
I move to approve the purchase of a buyer's product, tailgate, salt and sand spreader from Ranger.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item nine for purchase a tailgate spreader for the public works streets. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. During that, the ayes have it, so move. Thank you. All right. Uh, can we move on to item number ten? This is discussion of possible approval of directions to staff negotiated through for background to obtain a needsman by Coach's Road and Mill Road, one of the railroad that uh, is put on by the three council members.
I will.
Okay.
A week ago, I was, uh, contacted by people in my ward, institutions in my ward, uh, with a concern of their loss of accessibility behind their homes from Coach's Row, Belt Row, I believe, Coach's Road, all the way through Mill Road. Um, some of these people have had that accessibility since uh, nineteen seventy-five, which is forty-eight years, uh, asking around. That accessibility has possibly been there for a hundred and six years and it's never been shut off since the road, um, was put in. I can remember it as a kid, always being accessible, people to drive, then access their homes. Um, it's not that people are wanting any property. All they're wanting is the accessibility that they have and say them in their homes. Uh, like I said, some people have been there. Their homes have been modified because of that set of accessibility. Um, there are some people that were not able to make tonight's meeting because, uh, we have family emergency or they had something else they had to do and they'd like me to read their statement for them. And we do have people here also that would like to speak about the difficulties that it has, um, uh, so I'm gonna go ahead and read. Um, I have three, three statements that I'll read, um, from the people that, yeah, for you. Um, one of them, dear mayor and council member, we are owners of the property of two oh four Mill Road. Early this year, we became aware that Freeport Minnows Corporation was considering blocking access to the road behind our property. We wrote to them in April, but we see no reply. We have regularly used this access to clean and clear out brush debris and other materials to attempt to remove or reduce anything that could provide a field for fire. Last year, we spent days cutting back dead vegetation, weeds, brush and debris, which we stacked with the city to reload. During the drought, as trees may be dying, they will need to be removed. In the future, we anticipate the need for a very large tree. This tree is adjacent to the road in back property and we would need access to the road for a company to come in and move it safely. As we are currently mitigating fire hazards, not only on our property, but on the Freeport, uh, Mineral Corp's property as well. It seems to me to be a one-one situation for all, using the roadway to do the work to reduce potential fire fuels, helping our neighbors considering the mighty property. We are also concerned about the lack of secondary access and egress with the road closure. I believe it is always desirable to have two ways to access and egress, uh, T apartment and center equipment. The second letter, as you may concern, my family and I live on Coach's Road and I've been there for the past eight years and own a home. In that time, we have received soil and wood deliveries to the backyard via the back alley. Our cells and neighbors park and move vehicles in and out of our, of their rear alley facing gates, APS power lines go over our property and join with pools in the back of the alley. We have three lots and almost an acre of full garden outbuildings that require access and supplies. When our children go out to play and don't come home in time for dinner, we, we can no longer drive the back alley and efficiently look for them. Fire and police vehicles can no longer quickly access our back alley, compromising all of our safety on Coach's Road and the avenue. We were not warned, consulted or notified of disclosure by anyone. It literally seemed to happen overnight. Uh, please help us feel safer and allow access once more. Or help come up with a solution that works for all of us residents, including those that are physically unwell or geriatric. Thank you sincerely, David Chief House. Um, Mill Road residents unable to attend in person. They've held built in multiple access points, including the easement behind our property as proven to be an invaluable feature in our everyday lives and most importantly, in insurance safety for our family. We, when we initially purchased our home, the ability to effortlessly, effortlessly move items in and out of our yard without causing any disruption to our neighbors was a significant selling point. However, the importance of these access options goes far beyond convenience. In times of evacuation needs or emergencies, the true value of these paths becomes evident. My mother-in-law, being her seventies, benefits greatly from having easy and unobstructed ways to navigate our property. As we have a substantial yard, so the access to the back area is of paramount importance. Particularly in scenarios like fires or other emergencies, the fact that getting to the rear of our property through the front can be challenging underscores the critical nature of these access points. The easement along with other directions and paths provided during our purchase ensures that we have safer, more efficient means at entry and exit, even in stressful situations. This redundancy in access enhances our overall safety and preparedness. Affording us peace of mind that we can navigate our property with ease, ensuring the well-being of our family and realizing risks during any unforeseen circumstances. Thank you. Mark Bennett, Angel Salad, Adam Price, um, Pam, Tammy Johnson, Price, owner of the residence in, in a suburban apartment. So again, one of the biggest issues that the people are concerned is the safety, uh, the accessibility to the back of their house if there is an emergency and all the, the, the property that they got. Um, I'm deterred since they went there.
I have all people signed up.
Yeah.
All them, yeah, okay, it's great, yeah. Uh, Jerry? Do you wanna come up? Everybody. Three minutes more left.
Well, thanks for putting it.
Your name and that's all.
Okay. Yeah. My name is, uh, Jerry Melts. My wife and Norman and I lived at the three hundred in the low. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to bring all concern for the council. Normally I purchased our home in nineteen seventy-five. So we've lived there forty-eight years. When we bought the home, it had a block wall. The backyard was enclosed with a block wall, had a walk-through gate into what we assumed was the alley. And it had a drive-through gate. And we've actually built what we call the hay barn. It's, it's a big carport type where we, we get, uh, trailers on the caper in there. Um. So now we are, we have a trailer on there and we are unable to even get it out. It's a travel trailer. Um. Until a short time ago, the city picked up the garbage in that alley, just when we got, in Warren, we got the lowway dumpsters. And we never, don't use the, the dumpster in the alley anymore. Um, and also that at the rear of our property APS has a power pole with, uh, the transformer on it that serves three houses in that area. They had no access to it, the, uh, interruption in our electricity. Right in back of our wall is a sewer manhole, which the city is on occasion visited there. Uh, so they no longer have access to that. Um. We have, um, you go from our yard to our patio, it's just steps. And then from our patio to the yard is more steps. We, we have a fireplace. We used to have our fireplace living there. Anyway, it's just not convenient, but, um, my, another big concern is when the alley goes off, there's no access for the fire department or any emergency service. So anyway, thank you for the opportunity.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Have they seen a letter from Freeport?
No, I did not. No, but a gentleman did come. I was leaving my house one day and was in the car and he stopped me. And we talked on the street and he told me that, that they were gonna do this. And, uh.
In their letter, they said that they would work with individual property owners with legitimate needs with access. I didn't know. I just gotta ask everybody comes up if they've received that. So.
No, I, I spoke to, like, you know.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to find out. Um, Alan McGowan?
Thank you, Alan McGowan, the eighteen-year resident of Warren. I've been on the Mill Road about eleven years. Jerry's next door neighbor and he covered everything I was gonna say, so. Um. I, I was impressed, uh, a couple of weeks ago and had that little neighborhood meeting with the breadth of, of everybody that's been affected by it. Um, you know, it's a little inconvenience, uh, but the safety things of APS, getting their transformer back and, and, um, you know, the fire mitigation and, and I know the, the city inmate crews would cling back there and stuff like that, so. Um, I, I just wanna voice my equal concerns as Jerry. I didn't even notice. I just, it would.
Okay.
Put it up in block hours.
All right, thank you, Alan. Uh, Willow? Yeah. You knew you were next.
Good evening, uh, everybody.
Full name.
Willow Quimby.
There we go.
Okay, so Freeport, we, more as we know, it's close to the road. It's about fifty houses and some businesses that were affected. The residents and the predecessors, the debatable how long, but I know woman, one woman was born nineteen forty-ish then on the road, so she's been around that long. Uh, Freeport has not given permission to people nor ever objected. Specific issues include emergency and utility access egress and a plausible need for a new city bridge or else a land block issue. Vehicle or traffic is no longer possible due to concrete barricades blocking the road. I'm concerned for the well-being of all these people who are affected, who are concerned about the sudden abrupt action before a job. The road was a known used right-of-way street for eighty-plus years. It was certainly used to build many homes. My house is like down in a hole downhill, a hundred feet from Mill Road. By the easement, replacing the roof, there were five layers of asphalt chingles. I couldn't imagine pumping those upstairs to Mill Road. Also, considering the topography, fire goes uphill. The fire department mentioned, well, they were kindly taking a look at it, that they can't come in from Mill Road if there's a fire going, the natural, uh, pattern at my house. Um, two hundred six million iron is similar position. There's only one narrow staircase out of my lower yard going to fill with walls, fences and trees on the side. My way out in the little hazard on the house, because I live in the back, could be blocked by a fire. And I, whoever there could realistically die without egress on the back. Um, especially since there's regular. Um, especially since there's regular fires there in a tight clusters of home, the neighbors and I have woken up with our rooms filled with smoke. They have whole house at night while we're sleeping often um ongoing. Residents are notably worried about where there's tragic losses and uh increase in fires happening worldwide. With climate change, homes lost in Saginaw, Herford, California, Washington, Canada, Hawaii, more than could be mentioned. We've had several recent fires in the area that were all on that easements behind, several behind Cochise Road. Next to two oh six million and one hundred mil. There's a fair amount of elderly people who could have a lot of difficulty getting out of their homes and getting to a safe place. Folks are on the south end of the road or losing our secondary way out, like our egress. Um, these are the potential situations where you see people getting trapped and dying because they're stuck. Um, we think the Bisbee Fire Department may be some of the best in the state. They're accustomed, they're willing to work around some of the most difficult. And dangerous access situations and all busy to their best capability, which we definitely admire and appreciate. Um, I watched them in action when the house uh house across from Moon Candy caught on fire. Uh, the streets are filled with smoke and we sat out and cheered. Turned them on and uh so these people have lived in a part of town that was less thing. Like that are affected, have lived in a part of town that was less dangerous till now. And certainly don't want a higher risk scenario suddenly after eighty years of it being saved, especially as homeowners insurance.
Man, thirty minutes quickly.
So fire insurance, um. The companies are dropping new coverages, city what uh due to the situational busy. Residents are worried that we're going to lose insurance, it'll go up or an exclusion will happen where fire policy will be dropped. Um, so we don't want it to be the city-wide normal and we think that it could really like with maybe risk assessments and fire plans. Be relayed to the companies that those districts aren't a higher danger and so we don't feel safe now that the easement is gone. Easement, oh, but I think you just said a medical issues, a serious issue and the APS, sorry.
And so, thank you.
Behind my house, the sewer comes out and the the city's been extremely helpful, but if they can't get in from time to time. Bucket loads of poop like blood, it learns this, there's ten feet from my house. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, one more, which is wrong. That's me. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you for your name and talk for three minutes. Thank you.
I didn't draw a whole heart. I live on two seventeen Douglas Street. I have no access from Douglas Street and I have to use the old railroad bed, which is down alley to get to my house. Fremont was kind enough to not put the barricade beyond my backyard, but. Uh, since the access to my property is can be absolutely affected by further barricading. On the railroad bed, would like to present my thoughts on on the subject. First, I appreciate Fremont company. Uh responsibility and liability for the property and their choice to limit access. After property boundaries, easements are established, the further barricading is chosen. The installation of a public. For sensitive easement with a gate lock. Seems to be the best to do best serve the restriction for restriction in access. But that is my property uh of at two twenty, two sixteen, two seventeen, I'll give a right to have. Two seventeen Douglas Street and perhaps my neighbors at two 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 eleven are locked, landlocked. This this I I asked Fremont coming in good faith not to allow. Appreciate the grounds up keep by Fremont and the city of Bisbee may have have done in this area. Also, my trash, yes, also my trash barrels must be wheeled. To the center street, which is about a half block from my house. Because the Bisbee garbage truck can no longer come to my house. Uh, I'm I'm my, it's my dear birthday will be celebrated Saturday. So will this uh will will this trash barrel, I haven't logged it up beyond my capacities anymore. Uh, so we need to do something about being able to get my garbage done at my property. But uh, this is a. It was kind of a surprise to me because we came home one day and there was a block, blockades at the end of the alley. It's used to be a railroad and then right next to my house. And uh we was kind of living there without my even knowledge of it until I saw the barricade. But it's kind of an inconvenience for us. I'm sure that uh Fremont is concerned about her property and about the uh. The uh the protected property, I guess, but. You know, railroad is on, it's a longer Fremont.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Um, okay, uh it's quickly uh. That conversation was Freeport, we we must understand that this is a two private property issues. It's your private property, their private property, it's not city property. Uh, we're not up for discussion anymore, sir, so thank you. Okay, all right, um. They have informed us that they will be putting up gates with that will be openable with locks on them. So that we can get in there, APS can get in there. And by the letter that was sent to us, they said that they would work with individual property owners with legitimate access needs to the corridor. On a case-by-case basis, so um just that's what I know and I'm gonna give you to my city attorney. Which will basically tell you about how the city is not really into private property, but I'm not able to explain how that.
Well, I appreciate your efforts.
Oh, thank you. We'll look at the garbage situation. I'll have. You go ahead and sit down. Yeah, thank you. Happy birthday. Uh, yeah, issues to trace some. Any legal questions or concerns with like the city getting involved in a property issue between two private property. I say two private property owners, multiple private property owners with regard to the private property. Um, and understanding that there are concerns with regard to uh fire issues and and stuff like that. But that would really be Freeport's requirement or duty to maintain their property in a way that it doesn't. Uh, provide fuel and and stuff like that, just like it is incumbent on every property owner to. To reduce the the fire fuels of their of your own properties and things. Um. It really it sets a a bad precedent for the city to start getting involved in private property disputes. Because then you're just opening that floodgate for, well, my neighbor. His fence is two feet onto my property line. I want the city to come in. And they start calling law enforcement and prison enforcement. And those really are matters that if they are legitimate issues and concerns are taken to the court. And then the court can make its determination if, for example, if if there was a, you know. Substantial amount of time and use for a property to establish a an easement by prescription. That would be something for for the court to address and take care of. Um, you know, there's been questions as to whether or not there's, you know. Access for the city or access for APS and things like that. But those are issues between those entities, the city and Freeport, APS and Freeport. With regard to those utilities. And has that, I don't know, I guess. I would assume there are utility easements for the utilities that are there. I say assume because that's the standard process. If you're gonna put in a sewer line, you have a sewer sewer line utility easement. You're putting in a uh APS is putting in a power line. They have a power line easement. But those easements are restricted to those specific utility purposes. It doesn't give authorization for anyone to then have access to that property. And stuff like that. Now, there's ways that the city can help facilitate conversation between the parties. Um, to try to address the the private property concerns, asking, you know, the party's going to to the court. To try to get judicial relief and get an order that sends yes or no. Um, because essentially what's being asked is that, uh, you know, we've got one set of private property owners. That are asking the city to do something to require another private property owner to do something. Um, so just it puts the city in a in a very precarious situation. Where we don't want to violate anybody's private property rights. And if there are legitimate issues, we can facilitate those discussions. From what I saw, you know, the the letter that was attached to the agenda packet that shows that Freeport accordingly sent out certified. Uh, letters to the residents, not even know that they had worked with them on a on a case-by-case basis for that access. Um, and as the mayor had mentioned, you know, the concerns with the Jersey barriers being that. Will eventually be addressed with a an access gate that will be accessible to utility, to fire. To APS, to those specific needs. Now, that doesn't address the concerns of of the the property owners. Who are adjacent to their being able to ride their personal vehicles and and have access, vehicular access through that. Through that area. I know that according to their letter, there is pedestrian access. They're still allowing it to be used for a uh. Uh, walking purposes, trail purposes and stuff like that. They're just saying, you know, they've had these issues on the property, so in order to try to ameliorate those issues. These were the actions that they, whether the that is legally proper or not. That's, you know, really not something for the city, not for me to get legal advice to say uh that's. Essentially why we have these these types of court cases, but I see this on a regular basis, especially in the in the smaller, older rural municipalities. You know, especially where somebody comes in, buys a new property and they look at their property lying based off of the GIS map. And a neighbor, your your shed is ten feet over on my property. I want you to move it. And, you know, it's been there for forty or fifty years and they get into dispute and then all of a sudden. Police are being called out for standby because two property owners can't agree on something and. And that's why I understand you say, hey, you go get a court order, you know, that that establishes gateways. So, other questions? What I'm hearing is basically that. I can understand staff could help facilitate talks between the two, but we're not going to take any kind of. Um, action of the city to actually create something here that we don't have any yet, any need for outside, but. That's why I mean, outside it, mayor, council, you're you're the decision makers. Uh, i- it was determined that the city wants this as a. As a as a roadway, public roadway, there are processes in place for condemnation actions and stuff. But I enjoy it extremely expensive. To go through that and then you gotta realize that you're you're taking and using. Pass their funds for a very limited purpose to benefit a handful of private property. Uh, that, I just give the information and then and you guys are the the decision maker. But city manager often.
Uh, just a couple of brief comments, um, the uh. The agenda, you know, um, recommendation is to direct staff to negotiate. Um, I have a high-low of discomfort with that for all the reasons that I won't repeat. The the city attorney just stated, uh, and a couple that you stated, Mr. Mayor. Uh, however, uh, within the spirit of community, um, I have already offered to you. Uh, that uh the city staff would be willing to facilitate discussion uh between individual property owners. Um, to include uh Freeport McMoran. And uh, in fact, uh, having read this letter, but I don't know how many people got, because I know some people say they haven't. Um, I I happened to talk to uh the manager at Freeport uh late last week. And asked him the the position of the property that was still the same as it is in the slider. And he answered in affirmative. Uh, and then uh further question was, are you willing to negotiate with? The people along uh Cochise Row and well, the Mill Road uh with regard to their specific concerns. And uh and the answer was yes. So now, uh, what what I also got uh from him was. The uh, you know, it probably won't be a big meeting with thirty-two people in attendance, so probably. Uh, the property owner or two at a time. Uh, and then uh and and the city staff is willing to attend as many of those sessions as necessary. Uh, to forge or not uh and consensus that might come of that for recommendation. Uh, Freeport ultimately has the power to act or not. Um. Our role, in my view, is that we should uh assist in the meeting meetings. Um, establish decorum, make everybody follow the rules, um, and live with any results that be allowed. And I think that's the city's legitimate role in this, um, to act as negotiator on this.
I'm. My thinking would be that they've agreed that the Jersey barrier is not a permanent situation, but they'll be fenced with gates that open. That alleviates my problem with the city getting access to our sewer lines, our fire department getting access. We'll have our law common signs, whatever, off fields, so that would alleviate my concerns about the fire or the. French accents or the sewer and 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 probably anything is stupid. So I'm open it up for discussion. Um, I'll start on this side and work that.
Well, I certainly understand everybody who's who served here, especially someone who's had access and have been using it. However, we know that Freeport is a property owner and it's it's hard. I mean, when they move south Bisbee, and we've been hearing that for years since we were kids. And they ultimately have the right to do that, so we know that they are in control of their property. The only thing that I would like to say is that I understand everybody's concern about emergency access. Vehicles, personnel, um, the only thing that I can guarantee everybody. Is that our fire department will be able to get to you, whether it's a fire or a medical emergency. They will find some way, they will get there, so please don't think that we won't have emergency access. Or emergency personnel that can reach you because we will. Uh, I know that doesn't alleviate any of the other problems, but it sounds like with the gates and the F one key. Um, where they will allow uh Mr. Nals to get his hand around, you know, get him on case by case like that. I think, I think, you know, Freeport is willing to do that and it sounds like a good solution. But please know that the emergency personnel will be able to get to you for your property. But please know that the emergency personnel will be able to get to you for your property.
Uh just, I think it is appropriate for the city to facilitate conversations between the two parties. And see where it goes from there.
So for that, how do they go about doing that? Because I think that's that's the big big question, you know, they they would like to open that up. They want to find ways to alleviate this issue, so how do they go about doing that? And that's what, you know, the people are asking, so we'll answer that and.
Okay, we'll answer it, um four three two six zero one four. That's my phone number in my office, so if you remember that, write it down, six zero one four, uh share it with the. Um other neighbors who have any concerns, um if you don't have. A pencil or paper tonight, it's on my business card, I can give you one of those. Um what uh the staff is willing to do is, and 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 by the way, that might not be the answer in the phone. Um but somebody will and uh so what we will need to know is your name. Uh your telephone number, very important. Um and uh any other information you can provide us.
Address.
We would, yeah, we would like your address so that we know whereabouts you are along the road and uh. And email address would be helpful too, because sometimes we wanna send out a bunch of email. To uh different people at the same time, email is the best way to do it, so. Um if I can ask you to 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 do that for me. Um and or before you leave tonight, if you wanna write me a note, uh and leave it here. Then um then we'll know who would like to meet with the company and. Then I will contact the company and we will make the arrangements uh to have meetings with.
We're gonna send around a little sign sheet.
Thank you. I work. Yes, yes.
I just have about twenty more minutes on.
So I'm just gonna make a recommendation that that has direction and then we'll move forward as how we've discussed. Anything further?
I just wanted to just point out that. It's it's not as a central issue as most property issues disputes would be because. It is a an old rail line railway. Have a different rule and stuff when it comes to easements by prescription and stuff, just like on city property, it doesn't matter if you had something on city property. For a hundred years, you can't establish a right to it, so there there are likely. A lot of legal issues that would go into this that we just don't uh have an answer for.
Okay, well, then maybe more communications is what we really need and that might go a long way, so.
Yeah, one final thought, um we will not be representing individual property owners. Should litigation result from any of these discussions, so I just, I want that out there. Because if you choose to litigate, um then you will have to seek your own legal counsel and pay those expenses.
And we're not negotiating, we're just going to be. The facilitators, okay?
I I know that.
Oh.
Um I just wanna add that. There is the facts of the barriers and restrictions, et cetera, and all the legal aspects that um you shared. But there's also another relationship and between Freeport and community as well, so I wanted to. State that. Freeport's decision has caused some discomfort, might have. And with the relationship uh between Freeport and residents and that when we are. Assist me, uh not assisting, but helping facilitate the conversation, we should take that into consideration as well.
That's good direction, Stan. Okay, uh we'll move on now, this will be uh item number eleven. The duty discussion of approval ordinance O dash twenty three fifteen, so the mayor and council. City of Disney, County of Chiefs operating seven, county of certain property. Uh four sixteen H Street, we will be uh. I'm gonna always tell the.
We're we're gonna have to have quiet here, we're still gonna. And I'm gonna defer to Melissa.
Yeah, um thank you. And uh workforce housing initiative operating, taking all the necessary actions we've completed, and this is the thing. As we normally do to clarify emergency, because if we don't, our next day is three weeks away and we're wanting to get some of you to know this house. Go ahead, Lois.
Thank you, Mayor Council, um I bring good news, um we have sold, there are no available workforce houses right now, there are two being worked done. This is a brand new build, um sold for one one forty. Um we didn't do a formal um of potential, however, we did some cost comparisons. Um and this house such as this would have sold for one sixty or higher, so we really. If this house is gorgeous, um the program is working very well, we have. None available at the moment, we have two more in the works and one should be ready in the next one to three months. Um so this partnership, I guess I should say, between what we do at the city. And what step up is we not go does has been very successful. Um we've been asked to speak pretty much statewide uh about this workforce housing program, because it can be duplicated, so. Um I just wanted to let you know that this is another great sale. People that work in the restaurant business have established residency here, were about to get kicked out of their house because. The landlord was throwing it up for sale, I'm not gonna say too much about this or that. They were pre-qualified, they loved it and they're hoping to move in around the first month ever.
Great. I think just one more nail in the coffin. One more man hosting problems.
Right.
No, one more.
Yeah, solving.
No, sorry, it's nailing the wall, if it's past eight thirty and I started losing. No, thank you, questions? Um comments, um comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Melissa, for all your hard work on this, and really taught me here how well it's going.
Yeah.
Keep on, keep on.
Yeah, yeah, we've sold them all this year, that's great, sold them all.
All right, now the answer, Morgan. We don't wanna read it, but. See, you make a comment, you're stuck.
I moved to approve ordinance O dash twenty three dash fifteen, ordinance of the mayor and council. County of Cochise, state of Arizona, authorizing sale and transfer of certain property located at four one six N Street. We have this be county of Cochise, state of Arizona, under the city's workforce housing initiative. Authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary for the approximation of the transaction contemplated by this ordinance in preparing an emergency.
I'll second that, thank you, so being a little bit of a voice, all right, we have a motion and we have a second. You move forward on ordinance O dash twenty three dash fifteen under the emergency clause. Uh we'll make the roll call for four.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Giacomo.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Klein, Mayor Protem.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, question asked, so move it, thank you everyone. All right, we're gonna move on item twelve, it's definitely possible approval to enter, we're starting the contract, the D F L construction company. Tucson, Nevada, New City Hall, one eighteen Arizona three. I bring this before you and I will say with great pride. Am I happy as can be, yes, on the other side, no, because it's gonna cost more than what we'd like. But here's here's the bottom line, um I don't know how many you remember, but I did uh last Wednesday, which was the eleventh. Um October was the sixth year anniversary that our city hall is now, six years, we've been. I'm certainly been going around around on this for six years and we've gone around it now myself for better than a year and a half. We went out the bit before, um there was a lot of early stuff that, you know, of course. Supply chain problems and all the other stuff, this one came in still high, but but lower than the lowest one we had last time and. Through some engineering, as you can see before you, we've brought the price down a bit more. Uh some things that we feel we can finish ourselves, like the upstairs bathrooms and and some other things, but the main stuff. Was that, oh yeah, paving and and it's all in the in the in trying to do that. We're gonna, you know, try to work with and there are still maybe some savings in windows and some other things, but that might be a negotiated down the road, but. I don't know, I my final comment to you all and I'm sure, you know, we're open to discussion, but. It's not gonna be any cheaper ever, it's not, it's in the back of life and the. The inflation and what's going on, I um I feel personally that if we don't pull the trigger now, we're gonna be. Never and and we'll never be able to afford it. Uh one reason we can't afford it is because we've done so well in our budget this year. Uh we have, we have money there, we have money, it's in, it's in our budget, actually, three point nine million is in 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 the. And the and the and the budget and and how we get there, so. You know, I'm proud to sign this and say, this is one thing I think. Our community deserves, our community needs a a a place that they can call home, that they can come before us and be comfortable. And the cameras and all the other coffee works on a normal level without, you know. Hoping a prayer and all this other stuff, so I am. My our our employees, our employees deserve a place that is comfortable and they put up a lot, live a lot for less. Um six years and I think it'll be another year, I'm sure, before we they get in, but. But I think with that out there, it's going to help retain employees, I think it's gonna help us in all shape and form, so. I'm off my soapbox now, but I'm 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 very proud, actually, I said I wanna put my name in this, so I actually signed it, signed it. So let's, I'll open it up for discussion.
Well, I think it's been a long six years, certainly, and we moved to uh over the county. Worked there for a while. Here and there, over here, over there, Freeport. So uh yeah, you know, who goes to the city boy, they're putting up with all of it. And certainly need a new place, um I looked at some of the qualifications of VFL, they're like a reputable. Company and they had some big, big projects they've done, this is small, compared to some of the projects they've done, so that speaks well. Of what they'll do, what they say.
So I've got some inquiries as to the plans, you know, what design and all that, and I just wanna make it public that they can access that in the making now.
The actual. Higher plans.
Right, can they or you know, the layout of the of city hall, is it?
Sure, if I'm not mistaken, um I think uh now I'm putting up on the city website today. Uh it's the the PDF files that we got to drive your envelope.
Cause you had to request it prior to that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to make that, because there have been people requesting.
I I I will warn you though that uh these are uh full-size engineering drawings reduced to. Hey, I want my light, so you you won't be able to read anything, you'll be able to see the bitch.
But you can, you can expand. Um go ahead, I'll say something. Okay, I don't know. Um when when they start and reject the. We don't know until we award them and then, but.
We we did ask, uh we we had a mandatory contractors meeting before they did. And uh two of the contractors of the pre-biders showed up and uh we asked that question both of them. Uh answered that they would be in a position to be immobilized and right after we signed the contract. So that was actually music to our ears, you know, that doesn't always happen, especially here where we're so involved.
It's really hard for the final day and you know, people came before us so they couldn't get the switch gear, like those switch gears sometimes a long time ahead. I mean, those are months out, so.
Very anticipating of when your. Um for the contract to sustain.
I'm not really figuring out spend much time there, but I will picture it. When you uh watch it go up and that.
Boy, it's been a long time coming and I'm glad to see us move forward and uh. That was a hard night, we had hard days and uh I'm glad you're here speaking for this because when the fire happened. I was texting him pictures in the wee hours of the morning and he was the only one to ask how our guys were doing. Were our guys okay, he was the only one here. And uh on that morning of the eleventh, first text I got was from my son and all it said was six years ago. I'm glad to see us move on. All I can use is repeat whatever else that it's about time, you know, I'll be really glad to get into the new book. And I'm sure the staff will be as well.
Yeah, ours deserves it, they do, it was definitely.
And and the public, because it's a, it's the public's house and so I'm. There's both sides of the coin. One thing I will say about people that are gonna look at the plans. If they come to you and say, well, we should change this and we should change that, we are at our very limit, limit, limit. And as the mayor, I am putting the kibosh about any change orders, because we know what happens to those, so guys, just say. I appreciate your comments, but we're gonna build this design, and I just want to. Well, listen, you know, thank you all, yep, oh, you, oh, come on, go ahead.
On this one, you know I can't let it go all the time at all. Uh I uh I do remember him uh very vividly. I um it was my, it was my work home for eight years. And uh it was, you know, it was excruciating, now we see the picture, we're sending the pictures that are. Most began sending me at once the light of day. Before, um so uh now I was working in Winslow at the time, just so everybody gets the context of what I'm saying. Uh and then uh almost two and a half years ago now, I keep back to work here. And uh the uh one of the things we discussed, if you recall, that night when when you interviewed me by. Uh uh you know, virtual or virtual interview that night, uh somebody had asked what, you know, what I thought was important. Uh there were three things that were important to me that night, this was one. Uh not because it's a testament to uh you know, any monuments or anything like that, it was. It was the fact that it was, it was our community home. And it had been taken to us and uh and then I I guess I actually came back to work with all the mortgage at seven thirty. Um and it was probably before the end of the week, I had received several phone calls uh from around. Uh Warren neighborhood uh in close proximity uh to wreckage uh and uh. One one of them being the Warren Community Church who uh has sort of been uh our our spiritual home too well. Uh in in all those years, but uh we the ministers helping us out with events and. Doing prayers and doing memorial services for our employees who've asked. Uh and 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 then I went over and looked at it and I was just, I was flattered, I asked it, it had been totally. Um before, for a couple of years, and so one of the first things I asked uh the public first department to do. Is to at least go over and cut the weeds and trees down, um there's some trees there from, you know, at that point. Uh four years or so of of. I I wanna, I I also wanna pay a little homage to uh Albert Harper. Um not because he's the world's greatest architect that he cared most. I wish he could still be here because I really want his counsel now, uh helping make sure that building is built correctly. Uh now, we've been able to secure someone who's eminently qualified to help us with that, but it's not. So what's it a while? I, you know, it's a while to think about, you know, uh all the things that. Um yeah, this was very much a process of using the experts. Uh and and the experts were every one of our city employees, whether they worked in the building or not. Uh, and, and the experts were every one of our city employees, whether they worked in the building or not, they had input into how this building. Should be built and how it should function, and so, even though we've had to make some changes along the way. Uh, and some of which have to do with, you know, keeping the price under boiling in dollars. Uh, the, uh, reality is that one thing no one would sacrifice was the product of the design. And so, um, even though what, what eventually gets built will look a lot like the old buildings, but not completely, okay? Uh, we have retained the archway and treatment to the front of the building, which are, is certainly too fast. And I think, uh. I think we're good, I think we're gonna have a place to be, I don't know. And, uh, I'd like to hurry it up a little bit, cause you know, I'd like to cut the ribbon before.
Don't worry, you'll be around, um. I, the only I have to say is, when I became mayor, that was one of my promises. You don't always get to fulfill all your promises that you made before you get elected, but that isn't one, I've been on it, like, I think the staff will understand. That is, I'm kinda like stink on you know what, but them about it, because I feel that. I'm not trying to leave a legacy, but I just, it was deep in my heart, and then Al, Albert took it up, I, you know, we. Forced ahead, and when I first, the city manager first came back, and he sat down and talked about it, and I said. What are we gonna do? And he said, well, I think I'll just send you, that was a violation for that, I'm gonna be building this, instead of there. And.
And I did.
And soon enough, all of a sudden, my inbox shows up, and notes a violation from my, uh, city inspector, yeah. So that's the first step forward that we made, and, you know, we've gone around and around, but anyway. All speeches are done now, and let's, let's get these guy, you know, and you know, when you're gonna stand in office, like you're gonna hang out in the cock.
The mayor's been on this like fly on cheeky.
Now, that's what I do. Um, so, or, 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 I don't know, or it could be off stage, it could be carrot guilt, you know, huh? All right, um, why don't we make this motion, I recommend, or my motion is I move to declare. B F L Construction Company Inc. as the lowest bidder and enter into a contract to construct. A new building at one eighteen Arizona Street, Indian House, not to fix the, three point nine nine seven eight nine eight dollars.
Second.
Well, there it goes, that's great, all right, we have a motion and a second. To give B L, B F L instructions, in contract for a new city hall. All those in favor, raise your hands, aye. Call his name, is there enough, and move forward with the new city hall. I don't think this is a, it's a different motion, right? It's a lot of money, I know, and that, that's contentious, I believe.
Contract will have to be drafted, got, got it already.
So he'll come back for us, but this is, we're in the contract. Okay, um, now, let's move on to the last item, Jenna, this is our quick game, it's especially helpful to go to the local executive session. ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, dash, oh, three, for considering employment and appointment of the city manager.
Oh, that's fair.
Yeah, oh, you want, why don't you give your city manager?
I asked for, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I have what I, so I'll take more than a minute.
So, I'll send that.
There were some questions, um, posed by a member of the public, uh, a couple of weeks ago with regard to. Uh, why our cops didn't have body cams, and, uh, as you know, uh, anybody who's been around more than a couple of years knows that that's been an ongoing discussion. Uh, and, uh, at least one time, uh, the, the, the request for body cameras was turned down. Uh, but, uh, this year you approved, uh, the purchase of its body cams, along with the policy for their use. And, um, I am happy to report that you want to stand up to W G and model. Um, he makes a point, so they are. Yeah, being issued, go ahead, go ahead, explain.
They're cutting in your eye.
Body cams have an issue to drill officers, and they are fully operational now, and the device has been selected, still got the thing, but not there, but.
Mine's a little right, so.
And, and, and just one other thing, uh, Mr. Mayor, because of a comment that I just happened to over here, uh, earlier tonight. Um, I think the, the fact that, uh, we have, uh, uh, operated body cameras. For the first time ever, which I will belabor how effective I believe they are from personal experience. Um, but a lot of other improvements that have been being made in the last, uh, two years. Uh, at the police station, uh, are quite frankly, uh, you know, it, it takes leadership to make that stuff happen, okay? And, uh, I, I think that the fact that, uh, uh, Tim Cox could be explained in other, any other way. Than a leader of our police department, uh, is, is, is quite frankly a travesty, and I hope. People are still listening, that we're listening at seven o'clock tonight, because, um, you know, uh, and, and you know I never get mad, right? But, but, you know, sometimes things like that, uh, just, uh, really tick me off, because. Uh, Chief Cox has shown a lot of leadership, he's brought a lot of new, um, equipment, new, new, um, procedures and policy. Uh, internally and externally to the police department, and, and I could say this without exaggerating a bit, okay? Um, every person who has volunteered a comment to this city manager about this police chief has been positive. And so, that's just one small example of what he's been doing, not just to get more toys. But to improve the way we do our job as police officers, uh, and quite frankly, uh, to serve our public, so. Um, I think this is, this is a, a, a very notable improvement for us, and I'll get off my soapbox now and my record.
All right, thank you for that report, um, we only have something about, we already have that. Then getting a pump, and that's the next step, so we will, um, we'll keep the price on that. All right, so what I'm gonna do is make a motion to go into a second session, which is ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh, three. For considering employment and appointment of, of a city manager.
Second.
And a motion second to go into executive second, excuse everybody. Yeah, we're gonna do the second session, so.
We vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll just favor them, so, all right, I'm exposed, maybe, nobody. We'll be in the factor that.